Let me know when the, uh, when you're ready.
We're ready.
Are you ready? We're live?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hold on, hold on, everybody. Today is Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven thirty P. M. And this is a regular city commission meeting of the city of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please stay rising for the invocation.
Please bow your heads this evening. Lord, you are the God of love and might. We thank you for your daily blessings. We pray and ask you to guide us through transition. As we enter new season in the city of West Miami, we will not worry about the unknown or what is ahead. We simply trust in your word. We pray for our elected leaders so that they can continue working for the greater good of the city and in harmony. We pray for all those who labor for our great city as we celebrate the commencement of Employee Appreciation Day or Week next week. We pray for those in attendance this evening and for all the residents of the city of West Miami. We pray for our police officers and first responders and our military personnel so that they can return home safely from their daily tours. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, item, uh, three. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanis.
Present.
Commissioner Candy DaBlanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have courtroom.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular commission meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Seeing none this evening?
None.
Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Go ahead, manager.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have a written report this evening. However, I would like to, um, see if it's okay with the mayor and commission. Um, if you could, uh, hear the auditors come in at the next commission meeting to present the draft report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. So if that is okay, you will see that in your commission agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, uh, next item?
Item seven.
That was short today.
Yes, yes, for a change.
Go ahead.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report of the city, sorry.
Thank you. Next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Um, the only report I have today is just a kind of update on the projects because there's a lot of work going on there on the east side. Uh, drainage projects are in, uh, full swing. Um, I would report that we had a resident here that was going to talk today regarding some concerns they had about the installation going in on, on Fourteenth Street and, uh, we'll be out there tomorrow to review that with them and just make sure that it's addressed. Um, other than that, we're waiting on some pipe to get the water project finished up over here and, and finish restoration. Uh, so that should be occurring within the next month or so. Um, so that's about it.
Does anyone have any questions on the engineer's report? Seeing none, thank you. Next item.
Item nine, committee report.
Anybody for committee reports?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. We had a Parks and Rec advisory board meeting just before this meeting. Um, we were discussing basically the pickleball slash tennis courts once again and, and it was voted on by the board to bring before the commission, uh, basically saying that they agree to move forward with that project. And then what is done after that as far as if we want to keep that bid that we currently have, you know, maybe we'll discuss that here.
Yeah, um, why don't you work with, with administration? I, my, my, my opinion on that is, um, obviously we got to bring it back before this body to see if we want to move forward with it. Um, but I think the last bid, um, I, I remember we had a situation where we had no respondents to the bid and then we had some proposals. Um, and I know that we're working with a very tight deadline on those, on those, uh, for the contractors on those bids. So, you know, it would probably be cleaner to, you know, rebid that project, but work with administration, see what, you know, see what they tell you, bring it back to, to the table next meeting and let's, uh, and let's have a discussion item on that.
Sounds good. And then there was one more, uh, concern that was brought up that our fee schedule for the rec center might not be high enough. So we haven't raised our, our fees in quite some time. And so we would like, the, the Parks and Rec advisory board would like to do a comparative analysis. So I would like to bring forth in the next agenda a resolution, uh, to be voted on to authorize the office of the city manager to do that comparative analysis to see if maybe we increase. And again, I want to reiterate that this is for non-residents.
Sure.
So residents are not going to be touched with this, but non-residents, we want to see, um, with that comparative analysis, where are we fair?
I, I think that's, that's probably smart. Yep. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the commissioner? Nope. Any other, uh, report, committee reports? Seeing none, next item.
Item ten, unfinished business, none this evening. Uh, should I proceed with the regular order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
We had, uh, we had briefly discussed, uh, taking two items out of order briefly. Um, what, which, uh, which letters were those? I don't clear that I discussed it. Oh, item, uh,
Item H and I.
Uh, H and I. So can we take those two briefly out of order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah.
Item, item eleven, H, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, selecting a new ma- city manager for the city of West Miami, providing for an effective date.
So let me pull the resolution because I know we had some things in there that the attorney pointed out to me. Um, as we continue with this process, um, that we've been working on here, uh, it comes time to select, uh, for the selection of the manager. Um, and there's two items. Next one will be, uh, very important. But this one is for proffering the name. Uh, and I believe that the resolution has an incorrect, where's the resolution here? Yeah, that's right. Is it, is it, is it further here? Perfect. Thank you. So, uh, in looking at past president, uh, in the city and looking at, uh, cities surrounding us and then after doing a pretty thorough search, uh, at this time, I'd like to proffer the name Edward Silva. Uh, Edward served as, uh, manager at the Palmetto, Village of Palmetto Bay from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. Uh, during his tenure, he increased village services while lowering property taxes. In addition, he improved the overall net worth of the village by over ten million dollars in five years while acquiring land for three parks. Mr. Silva was instrumental in starting a town center district and acquiring over twenty million dollars in grant funding for the village. Uh, prior to being appointed to village manager, Mr. Silva served as the village's community development director, overseeing the construction of the first set, lead certified building in Miami D. County and the first platinum rated city hall in the southers, southeastern United States. In addition, he remodeled an existing park into one of the premier softball parks in Miami D. County and established the village's first dog park. He also increased services for the building department and achieved an I S O rating, making it the highest rated building department in Miami D. County. And lastly, very important, Mr. Silva increased the bond capacity for the village and raised its bond standing to the highest possible triple A rating. The, the city is obviously going through transition and it has, we've had a, a manager that's had a lot of, uh, has done a lot with a little, uh, very efficiently and has looked to expand services, uh, throughout the city for a very long time. I feel comfortable and Ed's ability to and experience to, uh, continue that, that, uh, that, that trend of continuing more services with efficiency. And I proffer his name for consideration for manager. At this time, I'll open the floor and I will open the floor to any comments or motions. The only thing I will say is on the resolution, there is a section in the bottom where it says that the city manager shall assume the position of city manager upon selection by the city commission. That is, that needs to be amended. The date that we have been looking for and I've been working with the manager on, uh, is for May thirtieth. Uh, that would have to be amended and a motion.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
So I had the chance to, to speak with Ed as well and being a longtime resident here and knowing the direction that the city's going in, which obviously our manager currently has done a great job to situate us in, in a very good position moving forward. Um, you know, I, you read his resume, um, but speaking with him, I, I got a good feeling that he would be a good fit for us as well. So I am happy to make that motion. I will make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead, vice mayor.
Yeah, I, I would like to, to add a couple of, make a couple of comments. I, I did speak to him as well and, uh, I told him he had some, uh, big shoes to fill. And, um, you know, I, uh, I, I told him that hopefully, uh, you know, uh, we can improve on what's been established here going forward, uh, which would be, uh, a feat. And, but I, I also felt like Commissioner Chavez, uh, I, I, I think that his, his overall experience, um, would really, uh, would really help. And, um, hopefully with the, um, with the help, uh, of our city manager, um, uh, with a consultation and, and the, um, the ongoing, uh, process of, of, of her leaving and him coming in would be a smooth one and I, I think it will. So hopefully, um, hopefully it'll be a good thing for the city of West Miami. I think, I think it will be. So I second the motion.
If anyone has, does anyone have any comments? Do we have a motion and a second? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
You have some comment. I think the, the person that you recommended and, uh, is, um, highly qualified, experienced, is a professional person related to the administration of the city with experience in public works, completely in, in building, experiencing administration. So I think he qualifies.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. The, um, I, I'd ask that you make, make clear that your motion is amending the resolution and section three, uh, which, which relates to this, the, the city manager's start date to, to read May thirtieth instead of, as, as opposed to upon selection by the city commission, which would mean now. So that's, uh, Commissioner Chavez, you can make, clarify that there, your motion amends section three.
My motion does amend section three with the start date of May thirtieth.
And, uh, and Commissioner Blanis, your, and Vice Mayor Blanis, your?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second as amended. Uh, please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, very important.
Yes, item eleven, aye, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, approving a consultant agreement between the city of West Miami and Yolanda Aguilar Consulting Services, Inc., providing for an effective date.
Uh, I don't think I need a report on this item. Uh, I think we've, we've, uh, I think everyone's probably had a chance to speak with the manager about it. Um, and I think we, uh, I, I think it's obvious the, uh, importance of, not only for transition, but also for projects that will, that will come up, you know, immediately in the time after. Um, so this contract is for a year and it is, uh, has a large scope. Um, immediately she will be, uh, assisting in all things transition and following that will be, uh, assisting on, uh, a variety of projects and, uh, and issues. Um, does anyone have any questions or concerns on this, uh, on this item? Uh, I imagine that everyone has been able to speak with the manager, administration on this. Um, but if anyone has any questions or concerns, uh, now is your time.
Uh, no question, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, vice mayor.
No question or concern, just a comment. Um, we all just spoke about Ed and voted him in unanimously, right? But with the big shoes that he has to fill, we want him to succeed. And by doing this, we have a person that has been here for forty years, that knowledge, to, to know that that knowledge is going to be here to help.
More than forty, more than forty years.
More than forty years, right? But to know that that knowledge is going to be here to help him succeed, which is what we want because his success is our city's success, right? So this is a no-brainer.
Thank you.
I, 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 I tend to agree.
Would I have a question?
Of course, Commissioner.
I think we all agree with you.
No, no, the, the, the commissioner has a, has a, go ahead.
You said it's a contest for one year, but here said the three years.
Where are you reading that?
Here, there.
No, this is for, I'm sorry, this is for audit and inspection rates. So it says that the city may at a reasonable time for a period up to three years, following the final payment to the city consultant under this agreement and any extensions, audit or cause to be audited, cause to be audited, inspected those books. Am I correct, um, Mr. Attorney?
That is correct.
So this is, this is give us a three-year window for us to audit and inspect, uh, books related to the city manager's contract. So the, so the city manager's consulting contract, but it's not a, it's not a three-year term.
Is clear enough?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, uh,
I just want you to know.
No, of course, of course.
I want to clear that.
Of course. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I, I, I obviously tend to agree. Uh, I know I worked with the manager on this contract, so obviously I'm in agreement. Um, but, uh, I think it's, it's extremely important to, uh, for the, for the city and extremely important for the incoming manager, um, for that, that we, that we, that we, uh, get this done. So if anyone has no other questions, uh, I'd, I'd like a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion.
But, but, but before I continue, is there any blanks that I need to be aware of in this, in this contract? Okay, okay, go ahead. We, we have a motion from Commissioner Chavez. We have a second from Commissioner Blanca. Please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Thank, yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you all. I won't let you down, even if it's from, in, in a, in a very different position, but I will never let the city down.
No, we know that. That's, that's why we, we feel very strongly about this. The, um, we have a, a long meeting though and we have to, uh, get back to the order.
Yes, sir.
Of the agenda. I, I appreciate you indulging me in there and the, going off, uh, script. Uh, let's get back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, uh, item eleven, under new business agenda items, eleven A, request for mitigation of liens for code violations at, please correct the typo, um, we have a screen error. The property located at thirteen zero zero Southwest Fifty-Eighth Avenue and owner Gladys Mayo.
Uh, can, can you read the resolution while you're at it and we'll fill the blanks?
Item B, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from, from Gladys Mayo on court enforcement liens for court violations at the property located at thirteen zero zero Southwest Fifty-Eighth Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for an effective date.
I, are we going to report on this first?
What don't we have? This, this, this is a, an unbelievable, uh,
Should, 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 would you like, would you like, uh?
I think Mr. Penna should, should step up.
Mr. Penna, could you report on this and then we'll give you the opportunity to be heard? I, thank you. You can stay up there if you'd like.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. This property had several violations over several years with the neighborhood up in arms about some of the violations. And over the, uh, time period, it accumulated three hundred and,
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand, was it? Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and seven cents.
Correct. And, uh, they were once, here once before to mitigate and at that time the violations hadn't been cleared. So it was, uh, allowed to be scheduled for another day. Since that time, the property has been cleaned up and the violations have been removed. And it's here again for the whole amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Here, Mr. President.
The manager and I have had extensive time working with this and so has all the past violations. Uh, there's been multifamilies, there's been fire code violations, trash and debris, and then just repeated and repeated offenses of the same over and over. And that's how you get to the three hundred and sixteen.
How many years? Going back how many years? Because three hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's a lot of money.
So I, if, if I could, well, you look up that number, um, I, if you, if you do the simple math here, the great bulk of the violations end up in two categories. They come up for a violation of trash and debris nuisance for a total of one hundred and forty-two thousand, uh, and change. And then also an R one district regulations violation of one hundred and forty-two thousand, but the same, the same exact amount. I'm guessing probably started around the same day and running on the same, what time frame?
Correct.
Um, is the R one district regulation, is that, is that, uh, is that multifamily or is, what is, what does that mean?
No, that would have been, uh, the condition of the property.
Oh, and the, the, R one district regulations is just like a, is a, is a placeholder of some sort?
Catchall.
It's a catchall? And then trash and debris is, is, uh, is, is nuisance is just, uh?
Correct. This starts from twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen is the date we're looking for. And when was it finally cleared? I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Everybody answers, uh,
It was finally cleared, uh, roughly about two months ago.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead. Commissioner.
My question is very similar to Commissioner Brando, Vice Mayor Branis. What kind of violation to get three hundred thousand dollars?
Prior to, to today, uh, her son would accumulate, will pick, go out and pick up all the excess items that he would see on the trash route, bring it to the house, try to repair it. Uh, once he filled up the shed, there was no room inside the shed, so he would put it in the backyard.
And what, and what kind of thing he repaired? Mechanicist?
Mechanical repairs, motorcycles, bolts, motors, uh, anything that he could find that he could, think he could repair.
And how long? There was more than a year?
Since twenty seventeen.
Mr. Penna, can you remind me again what happened last time she came before us?
You, 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 I, I, after this question, I'd, I'd like to obviously give the opportunity, sorry, give the opportunity to speak.
I do recognize her. I remember.
The violation wasn't cleared. The shed was still there with gas cans and all the excess mechanical parts.
Okay, so we never voted on anything at that point?
Ms. Mayo, correct?
Pero como no entiendo lo que hablan, pues.
You, you, you can talk or you can talk in Spanish. Yeah. But, but I, I just asked you to give your name and address for the record.
Come to the mic, come to the microphone. You are, you're going to translate? Come to close to the microphone, kind we can hear.
Okay, no, if you, if, if I can, I prefer to speak in Spanish.
That's, that, that, that's fine. Just for your name and address for the record.
Mi nombre es Anet, Samisa Gomez, yo soy su sobrina, eh, y vengo a ayudarla porque no tiene a nadie quien la ayude. Esto ya yo sabía del problema hace tiempo porque ella me cuenta, ella me dice, yo trabajo en Coral Gables, es diferente ciudad. Eh, las cosas que su hijo ha llevado a su casa son cosas como cualquier persona que vive en la casa y que quiere repararlas, es un chico joven. Yo no encuentro por mi parte que haya tal fallo como para que las violaciones se vayan incrementando hasta este precio, hasta una señora mayor que no tiene quien la ayude. O sea, yo vengo ya hoy porque es que no, no hay nadie que la pueda ayudar. Eh, ha insistido varias veces, ha hablado, creo que no me equivoco, que ha hablado con la manager en varias ocasiones. Nosotros nos hemos mantenido al margen porque de verdad que era algo de ellos y demás, pero es que no encuentra a nadie que la ayude.
El hijo vive con ella.
Sí. El hijo, ella vivió con su hijo. De hecho tiene algunas violaciones como que rentaba su casa y su casa jamás ha sido rentada. Entonces, eh, ya que no vemos, ya que no vemos solución, que cada vez se incrementan más las violaciones, pues he decidido yo acompañarla porque no tiene nadie quien la ayude. Entonces nos, eh, entiendo que sean unas violaciones, entiendo que quizás hayan, eh, su hijo haya hecho cosas que no estén bien, que haya que poner, eh, una multa o algo así por parte de la ciudad, pero no entiendo hasta qué punto tenga que haber esta suma y seguir sumando y seguir sumando.
Juan, ¿y usted ha hablado con el hijo?
Many occasions.
Y, y, y el hijo, eh, sigue viviendo en la, en la casa? Sigue ahí?
Will you respond yes or no?
Eh, yo veo un problema que puede su, que puede seguir sucediendo. Tu hijo, por lo que yo oigo, ha sido el problema que tú has tenido y por eso estás aquí presente a nosotros con esta, con este, con este fun.
Por ejemplo, que hayan autos estacionados, mal estacionados, no es causa de mi hijo. Llega alguien a mi casa, se ha estacionado mal, ha pasado uno de aquí de la ciudad, le ha tomado la foto, ella lo ha hecho. Eh, y, y es una violación y no es mi hijo. Esa es una. El que me han dicho que tengo.
Usted es la casa que está en la esquina.
Sí.
Miren, muchos residentes, muchos residentes se han quejado a mí de ti por años y años y años. Eh, si tú miras las otras casas que están enfrente a ti y al lado de ti, tú no ves que tienen eso. Tú no ves que tienen ese problema. O sea, te respetan y te dan el derecho que tú tienes a tener la calidad de vida que tú tienes. Pero tú, en, 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 eh, o sea, tú no le estás ofreciendo a ellos ese derecho. Okay? Porque ellos quieren tener, ellos quieren tener una calidad de vida, pero que no quieren tener a una, una propiedad al lado de ellos que parece un taller de servicio de mecánica.
Ya eso pasó.
Sí, pero, 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 sí, pero han sido muchos problemas. Aquí tiene, eh, tiene esto, tiene el otro, tiene el otro. O sea, consecuentemente, no estamos aquí por capricho. Estamos aquí porque, porque, porque de acuerdo a él, el director de court enforcement y a muchos residentes que se han quejado, existe un problema y hay un problema. Y el problema que yo veo es que si tu hijo sigue viviendo contigo, él va a seguir haciendo lo mismo. Él va a seguir haciendo esto porque si él va a seguir haciendo esto.
No ha pasado nada más, no hay ninguna otra queja.
Is that, is that, is that factual? Is that a, is that a, is that a fact?
For the past two months.
For the past, for the past two months?
Está, está limpio todavía?
Y, y, y pregunta, y, y desde dos mil diecisiete, yo sé que ahí ha habido en esa propiedad tuya problemas. ¿Por qué usted se ha tardado tanto en limpiar la propiedad? Porque estamos en, estamos en el, en el dos mil veintitrés y esto empezó en dos mil diecisiete.
No, no, en sí ha sido.
Hace, hace seis, siete años. O sea, por qué? Porque usted dejó que sucediera eso.
Hay algo que ha pasado. Me decían siempre que en la parte de afuera yo podía tener, eh, que no puedo tener absolutamente nada, en la parte de afuera. En la parte de dentro de mi casa puedo tener lo que yo necesito, un barbecue, una máquina de cortar, lo que fuera. Ahora tampoco en la parte de adentro y eso es lo que significa. En la parte de adentro no hay nada, ni afuera ni adentro. Yo lo lleve todo, ya no hay nada en esa, en la casa. Y esa es la razón que dice que ahora todo está limpio porque no tengo nada en el.
Su, su hijo es un hombre joven.
Sí.
Y este, este que trabaja, eh, el que trabaja él.
Es mecánico de carro.
Y trabaja en un lugar, tiene trabajo. Tú, tú dijiste que tú vivías en Coral Gables. Digo que tú, que tú trabajas para Coral Gables. Imagínate, si un residente de Coral Gables hace una cosa igual en la ciudad de Coral Gables, el problema que ese residente tuviera.
Yo entiendo.
O sea, las leyes no, no solamente están para los, para los otros residentes, pero están también para ti. O sea, usted tiene que respetar las leyes, porque esas leyes están ahí también por su beneficio, igual que el beneficio de los otros residentes. Y los otros residentes han estado sufriendo por seis o siete años viendo la calidad de, de, del aspecto de, de su propiedad, que no ha sido buena.
So I'm gonna interrupt you. I'm gonna say this in English if you, if you, that I want, I want to be very clear. I tend to agree with a lot of your saying, Vice Mayor. There's also the, look, the reality is, we're obviously going to, you know, the violation was cleared, right? We wanna, we wanna see if we get to a point of continued cleanliness in that property, right? But we also have to take into account that, you know, we're coming for mitigation now and we have to get to a mitigation number, because we're not going to obviously put a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar amount, right? We want compliance and we wanna, we wanna take what the city's time was and effort and the neighborhood evaluation into account. But we also, we also have to come to a mitigation. And so, you know, I think we should, number one, ask questions to make sure that this issue is not going to continue.
That's, that's my, that's my issue.
And number two, then get to, then get to a number on our side for, for the mitigation. But continue with your trail of thoughts.
Well, that's my issue, that it doesn't continue. I happen to know that this particular property has had many, many complaints and it's been brought up to my attention. I know exactly where the property is and it's been ongoing and it's, the police has been there numerous times. I'm not sure, you know, what the issue is with her son, but whatever it is that we do, I don't know if we can do this with a contingency that, that, that stops, because that's what we want. We want compliance. Nosotros lo que queremos es que pare, que no exista más este problema, para que usted, para que los residentes que viven alrededor de usted tengan una calidad de vida que ellos se merecen, de acuerdo a las leyes de nosotros. Usted no puede romper las leyes, okay? Caprichosamente nosotros no estamos aquí contra usted.
Yo entiendo.
Usted entiende, porque las leyes están ahí para, para cuidarla a ti y para cuidar a sus, a sus vecinos. Y lo que nosotros queremos es que eso no pase más, que eso pare.
Es correcto.
Una pregunta. Señora, su hijo entiende la cosa cuando usted le habla, él no tiene ningún problema entendimiento ni nada, es una persona normal. Que cuando usted le explique lo que le está diciendo el vice mayor, lo entiende, que es que, que las leyes y la ordenanza son para tenerla afuera y dentro de la propiedad limpio, que este no haya mosquitos, no haya animales, todo eso trae eso. Y él entiende cuando usted se lo explique, porque nosotros podemos tener un acto de ayudarle a usted. Pero lo que dice el vice mayor, que él entienda eso, que después no crea otro problema para usted, porque ahora que viene usted, no viene.
Es correcto.
A mí me da pena, pero bueno.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk from the administration side, tell us on your side and then we'll take it back to the table. Go ahead.
Well, this started in twenty seventeen and I discussed the file with Mr. Penna and the repeat offenses and basically the resources that the city has had to put forth to try to get the, the property owner in compliance.
And if I may, I'm sorry, if I may, before, if you could, if you can translate for...
Como no. Desde dos mil diecisiete, el caso está abierto de las violaciones del código que le acaban de expresar los miembros de la comisión y el director del cumplimiento de código. Como tal, la ciudad tiene que poner sus recursos, tiene que mandar las violaciones, tenemos que pagarle a una empleada para que mantenga los archivos, las notificaciones, a los mitines que usted seguramente tuvo que venir al Code Enforcement, o las citaron a venir al Code Enforcement en numerosas ocasiones. Los recursos de la policía, las veces que ha tenido que ir a la casa, la policía. El, el vecindario, como le explicó el vicealcalde Blanes, el vecindario en general, sus vecinos han sido afectados por lo que ha sucedido ahí a través de los años. Si usted me pide, nos pide a nosotros un valor que le hemos puesto a lo que es el trabajo de nosotros, our job, to recoup expenses, para recuperar los gastos de la ciudad, le diría que una suma puede ser cincuenta mil dólares. We could tell you that if we are to validate the file, what's gone into the file and the resources that we have expended, we would be, we're recommending a fifty thousand dollar mitigation fee.
So I, I appreciate the recommendation, but, you know, I think that we have to, you know, we have to, we have to play with that number a little bit, you know. I, I think that, I'm not sure, as I'm saying this, what that is, but I, I think, you know, as much as the neighborhood has been impacted and, and the codes have been clearly broken, we also, you know, we're, we're not here to be punitive and I understand that the recommendation is not intended to be punitive, but we're really just looking for compliance. Go ahead. Yeah, and if, and if you, if you may, please, so I don't, so again, I don't parse any words. If you can summarize what I've, what I said, because I don't want to, I don't want to misstate anything.
Sure. El alcalde está diciendo que aunque él reconoce el trabajo que ha tenido la ciudad y las notificaciones, todo lo que ha ido en el archivo este, es, la, la, lo que él quiere hacer es llevar al caso a una conclusión mitigando la multa que nosotros estamos recomendando, la parte de la administración recomienda, y llegar a un número o una, o una cifra que, donde usted entienda que hubo penalidades por cometer esas infracciones, pero que usted ha dado paso para que su propiedad esté ahora como debe de estar en, en el vecindario donde vive. Entonces, él quiere llegar, llevar a una cifra que pueda ser más asequible a su bolsillo, básicamente.
Yeah, and I don't know what the number is, because it's just such a large...
Y no sabemos cuál es el número eso, porque es una, una decisión bastante difícil.
The Commissioner.
Yolanda, el condado es bilingüe oficialmente.
Yes, sir.
Yo voy a hablar español, para que no haya duda.
Sí, señor.
Yo creo que cincuenta mil dólares es extraordinariamente demasiado, y si vamos a una corte, lo vamos a perder. Yo creo que todavía si le decimos cinco mil dólares de multa, pudiera ser que ella pueda, cinco mil dólares, y que el hijo sepa que hay que pagar cinco mil dólares. Pero cincuenta, yo estoy opuesto totalmente, eso es demasiado, eso es una, todavía cinco mil dólares, yo creo que ella y el hijo les puede doler y pueden, y saben que son cinco mil dólares.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Pero cincuenta, ni, ni llevarlo a la corte puede.
Yo, yo, I'm gonna speak in Spanish too.
Please speak in Spanish.
Yo, yo estoy de acuerdo con, con el alcalde, con lo que él dijo, que ella le hizo una trans...
Traducción.
Y lo que dice el comisionado Suarez. Y, o sea, usted debe en, en, en multa, trescientos sesenta y cinco mil, doscientos cuarenta y cinco mil dólares. Eso es una cifra, la administración, la administración, lo que se ha gastado la ciudad en ese periodo de seis o siete años, en, en, los clerks, los archivos, las notas, las multas, el correo, no hemos gastado. Y ese dinero tuyo, y ese dinero de todo lo que estamos aquí presentes, de los bolsillos de nosotros y de tus vecinos, se ha gastado cincuenta mil dólares por la causa en la cual usted ha tenido su propiedad. Yo, yo creo, yo estoy de acuerdo con, con el comisionado, yo creo que una cifra de cinco mil dólares sería apropiada. Lo que yo no quiero es que pase otra vez.
Sí, por favor.
Porque si usted, porque si usted viene un día aquí y yo estoy sentado aquí, yo no voy a tener la delicadeza de esa.
Es lógico.
No la voy a tener, porque entonces yo, entonces no, no, no estoy haciendo lo que yo debidamente debo de hacer, que es protegen, protegiendo al vecino suyo, al que vive al lado y al otro que vive al lado y al que vive enfrente, porque ellos no se merecen tener que vivir así, viendo el aspecto de la propiedad como usted lo ha tenido todo ese tiempo. Usted entiende bien?
Lo entiendo muy bien.
Okay.
All right, if anyone doesn't have any comments on that, you know, let's entertain a motion and, and before we do that, because we always end up with this, we have, I know there's another blank on this resolution, which is on the time, the time to repay. And, yeah, Yolanda, can, can you please go over the, the options for that and what, in Spanish?
Yes, if, okay, may I go in Spanish here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Si la multa se la rebaja la comisión a una cantidad de cinco mil dólares, en qué tiempo usted pudiera pagar esa multa? Vamos a decir, en noventa días, sesenta días?
En noventa días.
En noventa días, okay. She could pay in a period of ninety days a fine of five thousand dollars.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Usted está de acuerdo con los noventa días o necesita más tiempo?
De acuerdo con los noventa días.
Usted entiende bien lo que yo le dije, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Yo no la quiero ver otra vez aquí enfrente a nosotros por, por la misma razón.
Yo te quiero ver a frente de tu casa, con, con, con todo limpio y todo, pero no aquí.
Yo, yo, yo voy a estar, voy a estar chequeando.
Es correcto.
Voy a estar chequeando.
Y, y, y así cheque eso.
Yo no vivo muy long.
Can I get a motion? Get a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a, we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Suarez, sorry, Commissioner Chavez, please call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Ellos acaban de hacer una moción y han secundado esa moción y han aprobado unánimemente su multa que se mitigue en cinco mil dólares, a pagarla en un plazo de noventa días. La copia de la resolución está ahí para su récord pública cuando la firme el alcalde sea ejecutada, para que usted tenga constancia del documento de, que, lo que ellos han aprobado esta noche.
Muy bien, muchas gracias.
No, a usted.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buena noche, mi señora Mayo. Apúrese.
No, mañana vengo a pedir permiso para empezar a...
Vamos dando de convivir todos, nosotros somos vecinos, ¿no? Usted...
Así. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item eleven C, report.
Go ahead.
Report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to evaluation and appraisal review of the comprehensive plan to include property rights element.
And can you read the resolution as well?
Yes. Item D, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement attached to year two, at Exhibit A, with Florida International University, FIU, for the purpose of updating the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan and evaluation and appraisal report, directing the city manager to provide support staff to these efforts, accepting the proposal from Florida International University in the amount of, blank, so we'll get the amount, for the updating of the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan and evaluation and appraisal report, providing for an effective date.
Madam Manager, I know that the Mr. Murray, Dr. Murray, doctor, right?
Dr. Murray.
Dr. Murray, I know he had a, an emergency based off of, you know, very current issues.
But, yes, sir. Absolutely.
So if you could report on this, I know you had extensive discussions with him, you could report on why this is coming and what is the proposal?
Okay, so...
And, yeah.
Thank you. As a result of a recent letter that you may have seen copies of and discussed briefly here, the city has to go ahead and include the property rights element in the city's year-based amendments and comprehensive plan. And so, we also have to go through the year review, which is done every so often. There's a memo that I issued on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, advising the mayor and city commission that we met with Dr. Ned Murray from FIU, now also called the George Perez Metropolitan Center. We met with him last week to prepare the required, to, to discuss the scope of the work required with the evaluation and appraisal review, called the year, of the City of West Miami's COM plan and the inclusion of that property rights element for transmitted by June thirtieth. There is a very brief window of time to complete this. During the meeting, and Dr. Murray agreed to be here tonight and obviously had an emergency and could not be here, we have gone through the tasks and the deliverables associated with the year process and the property rights element, and we are advised by Dr. Murray that any modifications or amendments itself to the city's COM plan can be done at any time and will be treated as a separate issue. And this will assure them of, assure us that the, that the year and the property rights element can be submitted to FIU by June thirtieth. They, they guarantee that that can be done. So I think we need to schedule the first public workshop and the public hearing on the year and property rights element for Wednesday, May third, at six P.M., if that is possible. This way, Dr. Murray can come in and we can meet in an organizational meeting, so he can discuss with you exactly what goes into the year review. We have advertising requirements that are very strict by the state of Florida, so we want to meet those advertisement requirements if you would agree to having a, a separate meeting on the year-based amendments.
Yeah, let's, let's do that the same day as the commission meeting.
We have it.
And, yeah, advertising sunshine, however, needs to be.
Right. In the scope of the work, Dr. Murray basically stated that this would be a fee for their services would be nineteen thousand dollars for the task and the deliver, deliverables that they have and the transmittal of the, of the year-based amendments.
And this was budgeted, correct?
This is not only budgeted, this has been accrued for years.
Budgeting for years on this.
We have been designating and reserving money and the whole nineteen thousand dollars can be covered by the two oh two account, which is our designated reserve funds. We have a total of twenty-nine thousand dollars in that account.
Okay, perfect. Does anyone have any questions on this item?
No, we have to be sure, because a couple of years ago, we lost twenty thousand dollars with FIU and these people, because we, we didn't, did the, complete the work. So we have to be sure this time we do.
Yeah, so you, you, you met with Dr. Murray and we have, we have a contract, we have a contract that states exactly when they have to finish.
We have the, it, in the scope of the work, they have proposed their fees as well.
Okay.
All right.
Does anyone have any other?
Any motion for that?
Yes. Does anyone have any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, before you take the vote, Mr. Villalobos was present at the meeting, Mr. Penna and, and myself and the city clerk.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Suarez, we have a second by Commissioner Chavez. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, yes. Could we, if I may, could we agree on then on the, for the advertisement of the, of the public hearing?
Yes, for May third.
May third at six P.M.?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item.
Yes, item eleven E, bid tabulation report for hurricane and flood emergency sandbags project by city clerk, and I report that on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, the bid for the hurricane and flood emergency sandbags project was opened through Demandstar and one bid was received, being from ESR LLC in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
When, when, when you, when you say the, I looked through the material, when you say an amount, what is, what is the amount that, that is stated there?
The amount, it, it talks about the...
Is it just like how many sandbags we're requesting, like?
It's, it's based on a truck full.
Oh, a truck full.
A truck full. Exactly.
But we're not, we're not actually expending, we're not, we're not, if, if we approve this resolution, right, on that recommendation, we're not paying that money to this company.
We are not. Not unless you need them.
That only, if we, if we only need them and if we activate that contract.
And if we, yes, and, and the way...
We'll, we'll, we'll let the reporter on, then we'll ask...
I have a question.
Go ahead. You know, we'll just go to the questions.
This is the first time I see this. Previously, all the storms has been through here, the county, Rebecca Sosa, the commissioner, she already, always she got the, the, the full truck of sand for us, so we don't have to pay for the sand. And then with the voluntarias here and we, and the people, we do the, Vice Mayor Blane was directing that, and we don't have to spend that money. This is the first time I see this.
Yeah, so, go, go ahead.
If, if I may, the fact that we went out to bid doesn't mean that you have to use the service.
Well, but it's in the books. In so far, so far, we never have to have this in the budget. Because the, this money you maybe, if we approve this, you will be allocated in the budget that money, even case.
No, sir.
And, and let me finish. And my question is, we never have to allocate that money because always the county, eh, Rebecca Sosa, the commissioner, six, the district six, always she get the sand for us. And I'm pretty sure the actual commissioner will get the same thing.
Yeah, but if, if, you know, so let, let me just run through what this is, but I think you would, you would appreciate it very much. So what this is, is that it gives a, a tool, a toolbox, and I, and I know this company uh, has entered into agreements with Hialeah and Doral and some other cities already now. So what, what it is, is, let's say a, a category four, category five hurricane comes, right? We have a couple of options, right? We could, the county commissioner or a private person could drop off a bunch of sand and some bags and we can sit out there filling them, which is an option, and we've done it in the past.
We always did that way.
And I've done it and it's backbreaking, but I, but we've done it in the past, right? Now, look at the other alternative, right? Cat, category five hurricane comes and everybody wants sandbags, right? The, 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 the governor declares, declared emergency, the president declares state of emergency. We, we need to get a lot of sandbags out and frankly, sandbags are not available, uh, to, to purchase and sandbags, bags are not even available to purchase a lot of times. So now we want, we want this on-demand service, which the service comes, truck is there, ba- bags are filled in three seconds, right?
Yeah, maybe.
If, if we want to, if we don't want to, we don't activate the contract, we're not paying them anything. If we don't act, and we, and it doesn't preclude us from, it doesn't preclude us from buying sandbags or, or not buying sandbags, or just getting, filling them up that we've always done. What it is, is it gives us the option, if we wanted to go that route, to do so, which by the way is reimbursed by, by 82% reimbursed by FEMA, so at, at that point.
I, I understand that, but if, if a hurricane five comes through, will be no that company working, will be no sand, will be no, no firefighters, will be no police, will be nobody in the streets, if a five, category five comes. But anyway, anyway, this is a nice idea, this is a preventive thing, I understand that. But I just want to tell you that now even when Andrew passed by here, always the, the commission of the county, of the district get the sand for us.
And, and I'm, and I'm sure he'll continue.
But, but in, in order to be proactive, eh, it's okay, you have that thing, don't.
But, but I, but I want to clarify because I, 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 I have the same concern when I saw it. We're not, we are not putting out, we're not giving $24,000 to these people. That, that, that we're not, we're not outgoing any, any money.
This is the law, we say.
Right, no, no, but we're, we're not, we're not even, we're not providing that money.
No.
The, the money only comes, only spent if we want to spend it at that time, if we choose to do that. If we don't choose to do it, we don't, we don't use it.
I understood. I just want to clear that before, we still alive, before we didn't have to put that money there. Okay.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, eh, Blanca, she's afraid to the hurricane, so she wants to have the sand in her house.
Well, I don't blame her. I don't blame her.
I like this idea, I like this idea, you have to make sure.
You're good, 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 Commissioner.
She like to make sandbags.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
As Commissioner Suarez stated, this is not going to be a budgeted item?
No.
No.
It's not, so we're not putting money aside, so it's not affecting our budget in any way, shape or form?
Right, it, it's no different than a budgeted, than, than if we budget debris removal, right? We don't, we obviously don't budget debris removal because it's, that only happens if a hurricane takes down all the trees.
Yeah.
And at that point, we get reimbursed by FEMA, it's a whole process.
Right, and, and, and the, the way that I see it is, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, uh, Commissioner, uh, Cabrera will come through as, as typically, as so many times as Commissioner Sosa did.
I understood that, it's a proactive thing, that's okay.
Yeah, now, now, let's just say that for some reason, because I remember, I'm not sure what hurricane it was, we couldn't find bags, nobody had bags. I think that we had sand and no bags, and then I think that finally Commissioner Sosa came with some bags, she found bags somewhere.
But here, they, they don't talk about the bags, they only talk about the sand. So we should add the bags too.
No, no, bags are in there.
Oh, no, no, the, the.
Let me clarify, the, the, the bags, the bags are included in that, right?
Yes, that is correct, the bags are included.
Okay, I have to be sure, okay, okay.
This, this is like, uh.
I have nothing against, see, to be proactive, I just want to talk.
Here, I, I, I'll give an analogy, this is, this is, you got a car, you got four tires and you got a spare. If you get a flat tire, you use that spare. In this case, we're going to have two spare tires, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna have our main spare tire.
It's okay, no problem.
And if we get another flat, then you know what, then we use that second spare tire, so I like the idea, yeah, so.
She volunteered to distribute this.
What do you think about the spare tire, the second spare tire?
Does anyone have any, uh?
There's no.
I, I make a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion, if we have a motion, by, by Commissioner Blanca.
I think everyone said the same thing, four different ways.
Madam Clerk, did you catch, did you catch the motions? Or was there too much noise?
We need to read the resolution and.
I, I thought, I thought you read it, I, I always make you read it, go ahead, read it.
I haven't, I haven't. Yes, uh, item F, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami approving the recommendation of the city manager to award a contract to a single respondent, ESR Inc., for emergency sandbags to be distributed to citizens within the City of West Miami in case of emergency conditions that might lead to flooding and other catastrophes in the amount of $27,450. Funding shall be borne from account number blank, and the city manager was, uh, clarifying that, that we are not putting any account on that since it, these are monies that possibly will be reimbursed by FEMA.
And, and.
That we have.
And monies that possibly not be spent.
Just for the record, we keep $100,000 in a hurricane account. Every year we budget that. If we don't use that, that reverts back to reserves.
Right.
Okay, so we're not proposing that we increase that amount of money at all.
So, eh, we, let's go for the motions, Commissioner Suarez is not recognized. What was the motion?
The motion is, Commissioner Blanca is the motion.
Motion, motion and second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner, by Vice Mayor Blanés.
Second by Commissioner Blanca.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, Vice Mayor Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Next item is item 11G. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami implementing new services to citizens of the City of West Miami in the form of offering the SimplifyL software service for those citizens applying for construction permits with the city and filing notices of commencement with the Miami-Dade County Clerk, establishing a $20 fee for this service and providing for an effective date.
So we, this is, uh, this was brought from last meeting?
That is correct.
Um, I think we all were pretty much in, it was up, was a no-brainer, it wasn't anything controversial. Does anyone have any questions or concern on this? Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Pena, I have a question. There's an affidavit that we have to get notarized and then pay with a cashier's check when you're trying to get a, a permit.
That's the notice of commencement. That's the notice of commencement.
But there's, isn't there a separate, eh, separate, uh?
There's a separate form once you're finished to, uh, uh, to remove the notice of commencement. That's the affidavit.
But you have to pay before the permit is, is handed out?
No, no, that's after, when you're, when you're ready to close.
So is this system going to be something that we can use to pay or to have that affidavit? The, the thing I'm trying to address is where you have to get a cashier's check. You know, it kind of seems like go out of your way, get a cashier's check and bring it back.
No, not here anymore, you can pay it upfront with the credit card or a check.
So you can't do that?
Or cash, yeah.
Okay, fair.
We take all forms of payment.
All right, perfect.
Does, uh, does, uh, we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Second by, uh.
Commissioner, Commissioner Suarez.
Okay, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item J, please.
Yes, item J, report on recommendation of Recreation Advisory Board Chairman for procurement of gym equipment for the Recreation Center Wellness Center. This is by Commissioner Chavez Jr.
So the board brought in a subject matter expert, someone that had been in the industry for a long time, uh, working to open up many gyms, I think over a 30-year period.
I think.
Even longer, 40-year period. Um, so she basically brought us a lot of information about the different kinds of deals that we can get for equipment. Brand-new equipment was about double the cost of what we can get if we use new equip, or used equipment. Um, but refurbished equipment, I'm sorry. This is like new equipment, it's refurbished, but it's like new, has similar warranties as the new equipment. So the board voted to go with the refurbished equipment, it's about half the cost. Um, so that's basically where we're at here. Um, bring it up for discussion, see what you guys think.
That makes sense to me. Uh, refurbished equipment over new equipment, that, you know, that makes, makes all the sense in the world to cut, cut the cost while not, while not, you know, disrupting the, the quality of the, uh, service. Um, what do you need from us?
Well, we need to send it out for bids, so we're gonna need to.
So work with administration, I think we're all in agreement with that. So work with administration to get the bid, the bid together using, using, I guess, the, 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 the subject matter expert's, uh, recommendation on, and the boards and the, and the advisory board's, uh, recommendation on the outlay.
Sounds good, and we have a $120,000 set aside already for this?
We have it in this year's budget already, we, we forecasted that because the building was going up this fiscal year, that we would need to equip it and that was part of the, our budget recommendations to the, to the commission.
Should, should we bring back what, uh, what, what we're going to request in the bid, uh, here to the commission? Uh, is that something that the commission wants?
As far as the type of equipment?
Yeah, in terms of the type of equipment, would you feel more comfortable doing so?
I, I think so, uh, in the board, we discussed it briefly, but we didn't really get into the details of.
We can, uh, give you a proposed, uh, sample before it goes out to DemandStar of the, of the actual bid itself, and you could look at it and we'll specify all the equipment that's outlined in, in, that was part of the discussion.
Let's do that, let's, let's get a report, let's get a report on, on, uh, what equipment is going to be, uh, going out to bid, just so we, we, we get our eyes through.
We have that, we have that report available, uh, with Ms. Ramon.
Okay, if you, if you watch a circulator and, and, and then we'll go out, you know, we'll let you guys go out for a bid on that